Next project would be the Second Street Improvements. Again, Bill Murphy and his assistant city manager would be presenting it. Our style is to have the public comment first. And that's at this point, we have three in-person requests. One from Alex McLaren and then Bob Penjman. You have three minutes. Alex knows the drill, right? Very well.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Alex McLaren, 7624 East Osborne. I think you're going to see that later in the presentation that that Bill gives you as well. But this is Second Street from Goldwater all over the way over to Indian Bend Wash. And the proposal is to do improvements along Second Street from Goldwater to Scottsdale Road and connect into the improvements that have been done at Civic Center. This is where Museum Square is going to be and the Scottsdale Museum as well. And this is the baseball stadium. This is OLPH. And that little X there is where I live. So this is, I think, a very exciting project that has a lot of opportunities for making the streetscape really special. And I think some of the ideas that Bill is going to be presenting to you this evening are really exciting. There's Wunirfs and things like that that they talk about, but I think there's some really exciting opportunities to do that. And there was in the 2019 bond election, there's road improvements and pedestrian improvements along Second Street. I think there's $1.8 million to fund the project. And I know that some of the design is already being looked at as part of the overall Civic Center project design. So I strongly support this project. Exactly what gets put in, I think, needs to be subject to people's input. But there are some really exciting opportunities here. So I strongly support this. And Mr. Mayor, I like your idea of murals in the tunnel going underneath the Goldwater. I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
Next, we have Bob Penjman and French Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Ortega, council members. And by the way, that's a great idea with the overhang above the parking spaces on the roads. That's an excellent idea. In the arts district, the two-block radius, we have Museum Square coming, Kimsey coming, The Artisan, Scottsdale residences are being built right now, and the Bishop Lane will eventually surface, totaling about 800 units, probably over 1,000 cars. Not probably, certainly over 1,000 cars, maybe even 1,500 cars. When Museum Square was presented, I supported it, and I still support it. It's a great project. The thing, you know, the item that got in the way, back then, we had no guest parking requirements. So you can imagine 300, 400 rooms, no guest parking. So this city worked with us and the developer worked with us. I want to put this on the projector. This is actually what the city and the developer came up with. 83 on-street parking spots in addition to what we have right now, and then the Stagebrush Theater and the underground totaling all these parking spaces. Let me go to the Second Street situation. Upside down. If you look at the yellow part, and I can't put my hand on it and be behind the microphone, but right over here, that Second Street, it was proposed to have a lot of these parallel spots turned into angled spots. You can see it all in here. In fact, if you look at the development agreement or the development plan, again, upside down. Is it upside down? No, it's not. This is the actual contract number down here. So this is not something that is wishful thinking. This is the contract number within the development agreement. You can see the angled spots here on Second and other places, and retention of all of the parallel spots on the south side. Enter today's work study, which basically puts bike lanes on the south side, gets rid of all of the parallel spots, and on the north side adds minimal spaces or actually retains minimal spaces. And of course, the objective is to come up with this. Very, very pretty, but very, very dysfunctional. Whatever happened to the contractual agreements that are in the Museum Square agreement? I mean, that's not what I want. This is something that was negotiated and voted on, and I was for it. Many other people were for it based on this. You can't all of a sudden throw that out and put this nice design here. I mean, legally speaking, it doesn't work. And even if it's not legal, with all these extra apartments coming here, how could you be removing parking spaces? Bike lanes are fine, but you don't have to go to this drastic approach. And it's going to be extremely unpopular, and I guarantee you that it's going to have a lot of resistance from the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. French Thompson?
My name is French Thompson. My business address is 7148 East Main Street. Mr. Mayor, City Council people, you guys are all getting paid to be here. These guys are all getting paid to be here. I'm a volunteer. I shouldn't have to be here. I shouldn't have to hear the city talking about taking away any parking places. I heard this gentleman just very quietly take 10 parking places away with the last presentation, just kind of a little soft breath that 10 public parking places went away, just kind of like went away. You have a world-class downtown full of merchants. Every time you take away a parking place, you take away something for a merchant to be able to stay in business with. Just today, I had clients from Canada, and they said how much they loved coming down here, but they said, if we can't park down here, we're not coming here anymore. So, you know, my suggestion would be a little bit of sarcasm. When you guys ban cars from the city of Scottsdale and everybody has to ride a bicycle or a scooter, take away parking places. On the other hand, there's an alternative. You have the Stagebrush Theater parking lot. Put a four-floor, 400-space, 500-space parking garage there. So we had the Museum Square. We negotiated underground parking. You know, that is the least desirable parking for anybody in retail. So we got The Artisan. It's coming in. It's a basic whole parking lot that's going away, but this little tiny area is now going to be public parking, again, underground. So then, when somebody suggests, well, we don't really want to have employees parking there all day long, well, you know, if the employees park in those underground parking places, that leaves the other areas where the public would like to park, they'll park there. But anytime you guys bring up taking away parking, the people I talked to think you guys are insane. Either that or it's a cancer within the city that really wants to eat away and kill the downtown. So I said this to Mayor Lane a long time ago. There is a perception that the city would like to get rid of the downtown. And he said, no, 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 that's not true. And I said, what's true is there is a perception. People believe that that's what is going on in the background. And I keep seeing it. Everybody, 10 parking places just going away. So let's keep the city of Scottsdale real. Let's put in conversation where, hey, we're going to put in more parking above ground instead of 10 places going away. So thank God you guys are here. And Councilwoman Millhaven said she doesn't want to see parking going away. Councilwoman Kipudi says she doesn't want to see parking going away. Please, don't take away more parking. Add to it. We got cars. We got people. Let's make them inviting that they can be here and find a place to enjoy your beautiful downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now close public comment on our work-study item, and we will have the full presentation, Second Street Improvements.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Vice Mayor Kipudi. It's my privilege to introduce tonight Brandon Sobich, who is with DIG Architects Studios, and he is a principal in the studio. He has put together the presentation that you'll hear tonight. And so I'll turn it over to Brandon. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Members of council, Mayor, good to see you. And I'll jump into Scottsdale Second Street, where really, we were tasked with the city to envision or help kind of envision a different type of priority of street, where it wasn't necessarily about the automobile, but rather about pedestrians and cyclists, and understanding that this corridor really serves as a main artery that connects Indian Bend Wash into your old town. And really looking from, like the gentleman mentioned with the map, from Goldwater to Indian Bend Wash, understanding that there is connectivity from Indian Bend Wash into 75th. But then the library garage presents an obstacle in how to get in and around that, and then how we can create a different type of experience between Goldwater and Drinkwater that has more than the three trees that exist in the right-of-way today. So as you know, you know, Second Street is really home to a lot of the major institutional kind of cultural facilities. You go down a couple blocks, you have the stadium, you have Honor Health Campus, which continues to grow, you have the improvements to Civic Center, you know, the Museum Square development. The basis of this is that this is really kind of feeding all of that. And so if you make it an attractive and wonderful place to kind of be as a pedestrian and a cyclist, it can further kind of input energy into those institutions. Also, with this kind of idea of growing park space, Honor Health Campus, the stadium, there's this overlay of health and wellness that, you know, we see Scottsdale as a leader at, and that this type of facility and this type of kind of artery through the city can really promote that idea of health and wellness. When we started looking at kind of conceptual aspects of what makes kind of a place, especially when you think about a linear space and a streetscape, you know, branding and wayfinding, how you can bring color, art installations, the idea that you can close down the street and you can create markets, festivals. I know that there are a couple of programs that already exist on Second Street. How can we kind of build on that energy and create an opportunity for more? You know, and that really does have this idea of active programming. You know, there are all these different events, the canal scape, you know, how can we build on that energy and have Second Street kind of add to that overall network? And then the idea of the healthy street, so beyond just kind of a healthy street in terms of human health and promoting, you know, the activity of simply walking or cycling through the city, but the health of plant materials, being able to capture and collect water, being able to filter that water, thinking about the health of our environment, again, going from Plan III trees to 156 throughout the corridor, what that means from heat island effect, what it means from overall shading and air quality. And then obviously, mobility and how to create a street and an environment that's truly shared, where it's, you know, extremely comfortable to be a pedestrian, extremely comfortable to be a cyclist, and that allows vehicular movement through it. And then understanding kind of that transition, you know, pattern and what we're seeing in kind of our urban cities of how people actually move through spaces, how people get picked up and dropped off through spaces, and how, you know, it's really changing. So as we took a look at the overall corridor, you can see the existing uses, a lot of existing kind of institutions, but also a lot of potential in terms of lots and areas to be redeveloped. And we heard a couple of examples of those redevelopments that are occurring. And overall, when you kind of squint your eyes and blur the picture, it really becomes kind of these three distinct zones where you have, to the Goldwater side, what's really becoming a residential core with the Museum Square development, with the hotel and the residential components, and then this block around Scottsdale, which is really kind of a home to those retail components. And then what we're calling the civic core, which kind of marries where we're standing today in all the civic institutions to the Honor Health Campus, and it has a little bit different feeling to it and ties in the parking. And then kind of overlaid on that is this connection of the arts, the Museum of the West, to the Scottsdale Center Performing Arts, Mocha, and how Second Street can not only be kind of a healthy street and about mobility, but also about connecting the arts and looking for opportunities for public art displaying. This is just kind of a very simple summary slide, but we went through a lot of kind of exploration and discussed with Scottsdale Traffic and met with the Museum Square team and the Honor Health team, looking at kind of the overall flow of the space. This just is symbolizing that we'd be maintaining two-way traffic through the corridor, but really, you know, in this effort to kind of prioritize cycling and biking through the city and kind of connecting into the core, in knowing that the trail connection is kind of loaded one side coming from Indian Bend Wash, and then how you actually navigate over the library, and then also understanding the kind of conflicts at Drinkwater Boulevard, this idea of a cycle track or a two-way bike lane that's weighted to one side, so it runs along Honor Health, provides an extremely safe and bicycle-friendly environment and section of the street. So this gets into the concept of kind of a truly shared street, and that's really what Wunirf means. It means pedestrians, cars, bicyclists, all can kind of share and be in an environment. And these are just examples from around the country where this has been done successfully and done in a way where it can transition during the day into really kind of vibrant community space during the evening, and how this transitions then into kind of the old-town Wunirf and what Second Street could become for the city. So you can see the kind of the core areas have their own kind of identity as you march through, but they're all linked together. So starting with the residential core, which is kind of part of that Museum of the West, Artist School, the theater, residential development, the intent really was to slow down traffic and really make it about pedestrians. You're going to have a lot of pedestrian movement there. And so this idea of kind of jogging the center and the vehicular lanes to kind of slow down traffic naturally, having these kind of traffic calming moves through the environment, adding kind of a three-layer street tree approach, so you have the green, you have the shade, and then also introducing structural shade as well along the pedestrian environments and the bikeways. So you're kind of constantly under a tunnel of shade when you're navigating through this environment. And then having kind of a pavement upgrade, and this is something that was looked at on that development agreement, have that pavement upgrade where it feels natural where, you know, the street could close down, you could have events, you could have those type of opportunities, where it really does feel like you're kind of driving through more of a plaza scape than a street. You can see the proposed section where the travel lanes actually narrow down. Many studies show the narrower the travel lane, the less traffic speed. So naturally, that brings your kind of design speed down. We're working with traffic engineers as well to kind of understand how we can integrate these kind of intuitive traffic calming techniques throughout the entire design. So you go 10-foot travel lanes, that shrinks down from like the 12 to 13 that are out there right now, greatly reduces kind of traffic speeds and allows us to create a really nice kind of open and generous cyclist environment and pedestrian environment, and then there would be parallel parking maintained. So here's just kind of a view with these canopies that, you know, are envisioned to kind of hold amenity underneath them. So we're actually taking advantage of these kind of remnant spaces that you find in the city. So all of a sudden, a six-foot zone goes to a great place to unload, may have one of those bike fix stations, may have some seating outside of, you know, the Artist School or future restaurants that can start to activate those spaces. This is a similar section, just without that canopy and how that double row of trees starts to create kind of that tunnel of shade again. As we move down the corridor from Scottsdale to Brown, we kind of encounter more obstacles in terms of where current kind of ins and outs are within the street, so the street section kind of straightens a bit. But we introduce kind of nice architectural shade on the south side again. The thought with that is that they could have color-changing kind of LED lighting that's associated with the structures. It could be, you know, an opportunity to hold and showcase art, public art installations. You know, the Giants are playing, the whole street turns orange. You know, it's the holiday season, you know. You could imagine kind of the possibilities when you have that type of infrastructure to really brand a street, and not just brand it once, but let it be kind of this living and breathing kind of entity, especially since it touches all those different kind of institutions, you know, depending on the time of season or what event may be happening downtown. These types of, you know, this type of infrastructure could really kind of create a vibrant, vibrant space. So as we move down towards the Scottsdale Center Performing Arts, the Honor Health Medical Campus, this section changes a little bit and allows for that median planting. And then that median planting acts as a buffer to the bike lane, and again, provides that kind of shaded corridor on the south side, permeable parking spots. Again, looking at permeability and paving to collect and filter water, but also just thinking about the temperature of pavements and how that's been proven to actually cool pavement temperatures. And then one of the big kind of moves to assist in traffic calming, and again, this is kind of that priority of the pedestrian over the car, is kind of the secondary intersections would then be raised, so they'd be tabled. So you'd have this natural kind of device or speed bump to kind of slow down traffic. And then the pedestrian crossings become flush, and so you don't have to worry about the ups and downs if you're, you know, pushing a stroller in a wheelchair. It creates a really seamless and nice environment, and then you use tools like bollards and lighting to delineate, you know, your edges and your spaces, and obviously make sure that nobody drives down the various corridors. And then the idea is that then these corners can hold public art, they can hold signage, they can hold wayfinding, so when you get to the space, you can understand the great context that's around you. This shot shows it well, where these kind of pocket spaces can start to be that art connection that links, you know, the Civic Center and where we are, all the way over to Goldwater. So you have these moments that, as a cyclist and as a pedestrian, you're driving by and experiencing. And then integrated into this whole concept is this idea of stormwater collection. If you're aware, obviously, there's a giant pipe underground. It takes everything from Second Street right now and brings it out to Indian Bend Wash. And while that's functional and works well, there's benefit to slowing down that process of water movement and actually using the additional landscape areas to collect and filter that water before it ultimately finds its home in Indian Bend Wash. So the thought through the section is that we'd have these raised curbs for, you know, to control vehicular traffic, but then we would allow water cuts into them, swale the planting areas, use, you know, desert plant materials that can kind of benefit and thrive from that additional water, and also support healthy tree growth. So then these trees, you know, get mature, get large, and provide the shade that we'd want them to provide. And then one of the biggest moves of this study was looking at the condition over at the library. If anybody's tried to ride from Indian Bend to Drinkwater, once you hit that library, you get very confused on what and where exactly you're supposed to go. We looked at some options where you'd actually go under and into the garage, and there were some accessibility issues with how you actually come back out of the garage and engage with Second Street. And the ultimate preferred so far has been kind of looking at actually going up and over. There's a natural split when you come to 75th in terms of kind of going up to the ramp and then kind of going along the parking garage edge. And so the thought is through striping, through wayfinding, we can kind of naturally guide kind of pedestrians and cyclists to navigate through this corridor, and then highlight in areas where you'd have kind of a shared use of either pedestrians crossing to get in the library, or kind of a mix of both pedestrians and cyclists on the trail. So here you can kind of see a shot and understand the grade challenges that are faced with this area, but by utilizing that upper deck of the parking garage, which is already there, you know, we could kind of bring cyclists from 75th up and around and then over the parking garage. If you recall, there's a kind of a straight shot 90-degree bridge that's very, very tight and narrow. The thought is to kind of reimagine that bridge and turn it so it's a simple cyclist movement, you know, kind of arrow right here, where you'd basically dismount kind of off of the parking garage and then ride into the Drinkwater intersection, and then be able to cross and engage with that cycle track down Second Street. That grade difference actually works out where it's all completely accessible. And here's another kind of shot of how that would work, where this becomes kind of trail. You could use bollards as kind of a safety device to delineate, you know, your parking and your traffic aisles with your pedestrian and cyclist path. And then kind of an overall shot of how that would lead you into Second Street, and then you can understand kind of the impact of those shading devices, and especially the street trees and the extra landscape that's put in to create a much, much different corridor than what's out there right now. And that is Scottsdale Second Street. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any hands up, so I will... Oh, Councilwoman Whitehead?
Well, you can go first.
Okay. So our council approved bike paths and bikeways. I like the linear connectivity that's, you know, from Indian Bend to the outer part of the Goldwater couplet. So that must mean it also crosses the Goldwater couplet that you got into in some detail. I'm sorry, the Drinkwater...
The Drinkwater one, yeah.
Yeah. So just kind of letting people orient themselves there. The weakness, so how well does the overall bike path that was approved by the Transportation Department and how it circulates through there, you know, connect? So we'll be able to zoom out, maybe look at that a little closer. The other concerns are, of course, when you eliminate half the parking, that's not good. And, you know, by my calculation, every parking space is worth half a million dollars in business. Fashion Square uses a similar kind of calculation. They know they need X thousands spaces to support their area. I don't see a large biking crew needing, you know, 11 feet width or whatever, going in two directions all day long. I don't particularly see that. I like the separation, however, because people aren't backing up into the bike lane in the street. I can understand that. But I would be more... So that is going to be a problem, because when spaces are eliminated, people still have to park, and they go two blocks over and congest that, and it starts piling on and making everything less accessible. What I'd like to call your attention to are the connectivity to Main Street and the stores there, right? So as well as, I guess, the next one, Bishop and... What's important, perhaps, is you might look at your shading elements to turn the corner towards Main Street, at least go part of the way that way, try to extend that. At the southeast, sorry, the southeast corner of Brown and Second Street, there's a medical building there that has what looks like covered shaded walkways. But the slats are too far apart. They don't really shade you for much. And then occasionally, there's a blank, in other words, it's just open, which, again, it doesn't suffice for being shaded. I've encouraged everyone in the old-town area, they must have shaded areas. And the city can pay for the trees and maintain the trees. So that's a big concern. Trees also cover signage, so it tends to be better if you pull them away from the building, but I think you have some of that meandering going on. So what's... This aerial shows how you could connect, of course, to Scottsdale Road or Main Street eventually. So I'd like, it's sort of boring if you go down one way and you come back the same way. You may as well loop and do a U-turn two blocks over and come back on Civic Center.
Yes.
So maybe what you really need is almost like a one-way thing, or, you know, our minimum is eight feet for a bike path or a covered walkway. You're expanding that substantially. So I'm more concerned about, I don't think there's much on that end, the west end, other than some perhaps residential units. I don't see much on the Indian Bend side. I don't see much on the Indian Bend side unless people have, you know, baskets and luggage and saddlebags to buy things on their bicycle. It may not, you know, exactly be a great use of that, that resource for bicycles beyond being, I don't want to say minimal, but protected and it probably makes more sense. The, some of the open areas that you've seen, like where the canopy is, there's no covered walkway there. I was critical of that, that's a hotel, and unfortunately, it's just a slab of concrete and now the city's having to go back and plant trees or perhaps create some shade element, because if we did have shade element, people would walk all the way to the Museum of the West.
Yeah.
I think it's attractive to do that, right?
Yeah.
So, so try to turn the corners.
Yeah, I like that idea a lot of turning the corners and being able to make sure if you're on Main or something, you can kind of see something that distinguishes Second Street kind of popping out and coming in and, yeah, that's a good comment.
And then there was a comment earlier about the density and 12,000 units, maybe 24, 25,000 people. That puts pressure on the medical campus, they basically will need more hotel rooms, sorry, hospital rooms, and they'll need more specialists and all that, so it's really overcongesting that area in, in my opinion, we've kind of hit the limit on residential units. If all of those get built out, that's a tremendous strain and, and that, the, the connectivity has to continue to marshal away, right? And so at, in your drawing there, that's on the, on the screen, the top road horizontally, that, that is Main Street, I believe, isn't it?
Uh, yeah, you're correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, the top.
Main Street, the very top one.
Yep.
So, you know, just to give you an idea, it's more important, again, I don't need people going back and forth along that lane, I need them to come and feed into the, feed into the existing businesses and so forth. And so I like what you're solving perhaps around the Civic Center. I hope that we can get OLPH into the discussions and make sure and see how far some of these tree scapes can go and see how it would, would work to encourage that. So there's private sector and even religious properties that should be acknowledged and figure that one out. There is not much activity on Second Street and although they're marked retail and so forth. The other area that I want to call your attention to is off the screen, but it's where the split is, the couplet split off of Scottsdale Road that says Civic Center and the new mall, the new lawn area. So, you know, again, technically, we really want people to make the split before they hit Second Street. We want the bulk of the traffic to use a couplet, park outside and walk in.
Yeah.
And circulate that way. So have you, you know, if you need to, you need to examine that, because, you know, crushing the inside that has some character or could build some character is, is more important than, you know, creating large parking structures right in the middle of it and squashing everything out. Okay, I see two people to speak, Councilwoman Whitehead and Councilwoman Littlefield.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with a lot of what the mayor just said, you know, having one good street with trees isn't really my idea of downtown. So definitely all the discussion about having, I'd rather see investment at least on the, around the corners and on the north, I guess, north, south streets. I agree also on the bicycles. The retail corridor, especially west of Scottsdale Road, it tends to be pretty slow. In other discussions, we just talked about slapping a bike, share a bike with the cars, that'll slow cars down. Bicycles don't tend to get hurt when there's tiny retail roads with everybody going slowly. So the idea of separating the bikes becomes much more important, certainly by, you know, as you go east or west, where the speeds tend to pick up. So I'm, I also think that, you know, is it pretty? Yeah, it's beautiful what you've proposed for bikes, but I think it's a little bit overkill and then we are taking away parking spaces we don't need to. So I think you could probably accommodate retaining the Museum Square parking spaces, minimizing the bike, or perhaps flowing the bikes onto the road for that little corridor where the cars share, something like that. Yeah, I think, I think it'd be interesting to compare, you know, again, this, and that's sort of a separate thing, to compare the budget of, you know, here we're trying to create a brand-new park, the budget being spent on a new park versus trying to make one road have trees and bikes. Also, I just want to add that staff should come back with all the parking so that we have a map that shows where the new parking is going to be and also the bond funding for new parking, because there is quite a bit of bond funding for new parking. So we have a picture of proposed parking and guaranteed new parking, that's sort of a staff thing. Thanks.
Councilwoman Littlefield.
Thank you, Mayor. I almost don't know where to start. First of all, it's very pretty, the pictures are very, very pretty. As I'm looking at one right here, there's a couple of rows of bicycles and there's two sidewalks next to each other, then there's a row of beautiful plants, very desert, very nice, then there's a row of parked cars, then there's two rows of going cars, moving cars, then there's another row of parked cars and another sidewalk. I'm sorry, Second Street does not have that kind of width to it and it can't accommodate all of that. So to me, it really kind of is, you're not going to tear down the buildings to build the streets, so it doesn't make any sense. It's very pretty and it would fit in any city in California or New Mexico or Texas or Nevada or even Arizona, but it's not Scottsdale, there's nothing here that's Scottsdale. They're taking away the Old Town look, feel, texture that people come here to see. And if you take that away, they're going to go somewhere else like Santa Fe or someplace where it is, where they can have that kind of experience and that's going to hurt our businesses and our connoisseurs here who trade with those kinds of people, that that's what their businesses are set up for. So I worry about that a little bit. Nothing Scottsdale here. A lot of white, we're not necessarily a white city, we are more of a tan, more of a dusty, more of a western look, feel, touch. And so to me, white is not really what I'm looking for particularly in color style. I do like the plants, I like the desert look and feel of the plants that you put in there, I think that's very appropriate. But the all-white, it's very reflective and I think it would be blinding to many people in the bright, direct summer sun. And that's something that you have to realize, that's what we have here. And Museum Square, talk about Museum Square, we worked very, very hard, I know our city manager worked very, very hard to get that contract in place with Museum Square and we, part of that parking along that Second Street is part of the contract with Museum Square. So it's a contractual arrangement that we have signed for and that we have agreed for with this developer who is putting in an extremely beautiful hotel and other things, which was quite a difficult task to get all of it put together and done right. And I'm unwilling to undo any of it at this point in time because I don't want it to unravel, I want that. So another thing, parking locations and striping on Second Street, it's contractual, okay, I already said that. I do like the shading, I like some of the shading that you've put in there, I think it could be a little bit more differentiated in different areas so that it more reflects the different parts of downtown that it's shading. But I, I like that, I think in the late spring and the summer and the, and the early fall, that would be very enticing to people to have shade covering, coming through. But taking parking away from, from the downtown area, from Second Street, that's going to hurt our businesses and there's just no two ways about it. When those businesses are up and operating in the, in the strength of our season, when our tourists come here, those parking lots and those parking spaces are taken and they're taken 100% of the time until the stores close. So to take that parking away from, in front of those stores is going to be very damaging to them. And I really cannot say that I approve of that because there has, they are the businesses that have made our downtown and our Old Town thrive and they're continuing to do that. We need to give them the tools they need and that includes parking spaces. So a lot of the parking spaces that we had before, like in Artisan, those are going away. We don't need to take more parking away, we need to add to it. And I think that's something that should be filled out. We need the spaces for parking, the reason is, people in Scottsdale and in North Phoenix and the folks that come here to shop in our downtown and stay in our, in our hotels even, they have cars. They want to park their cars, they want to drive their cars to where they go in the summer in the heat, they don't want to park, you know, half a mile away and walk or take, they want to park right where they want to go in the refrigerated businesses and, and do their business. So that's, that's very vital to me. I don't, I don't want to remove the, the south side parking on Second Street, that's just not good. I like the shade aspects that you're putting in, especially on the bicycling and walking paths. Shading can be very decorative, I think, and it can be very fanciful and I think it can add a lot, depending on maybe the time of year, maybe we shift it according to the season, you know, and make different things reflective of different times of year that, that the various businesses, restaurants and tourist areas are trying to attract people to come and see and maybe leading into other areas, for example, when we do our canal convergence, have some of those kinds of shades and lights and things lead people to go in that direction. I think that might be kind of fun. We need large, easily read signage, I like the signage that you had, I love some of the pictures that you showed on it. We need good signage and we don't have it. We also need much better lighting in our downtown, which we don't have, and I think that could be a real priority, not only for guiding people around town, but also for I like bicycles, but it's not the only means of transportation and it needs to be secondary to cars. So that's kind of where I am on that. We need pavement upgrades, definitely, our narrow lanes should have lower speeds, but we need to upgrade the pavement, make sure that it's available and open for the cyclists, for the pedestrians and also for the cars. Water filters, cuts, go down to, and we need wayfinding, that's my last note. Our wayfinding signs that we have down there, I don't think are adequate and we need something that is much more eye-catching and much more directional. Those are the things I have, I also agree with many of the comments that the mayor had. Thank you.
Councilmember Millhaven and then Vice Mayor Kapooti.
First, I want to say, wow, awesome, terrific, yes, please, thank you. I think that activating Second Street in that way and leveraging all those amazing assets that we have around Second Street, it would just be tremendous. Second thing I want to say is, wow, I'm really confused because we had a conversation a few minutes ago about the Rose Garden parking lot and adding trees and taking away parking spaces and, and the conversation I heard from my peers was, let's add more trees and take away more parking spaces. And now what I'm hearing is, so one street of trees isn't going to make a difference and parking is sacrosanct. So I'm a little bit confused. I do want to clarify, on Rose Garden, I didn't say I was unwilling to give up spaces, I was saying I was sorry to see that we've lost 16 spaces and I didn't want to give up too much more, because I do think this conversation needs to be a balance. If we create some really exciting, neat places for people to go, more people will come there. So some of my colleagues tonight, they said, well, not much happens on Second Street. Well, that's the very reason why we want to do this, because I think that will attract folks to take advantage of it. So I am willing to, and then the other thing I would point out is, we talked about Museum Square and one of the speakers pointed to the, the net-net of Museum Square. We overparked Museum Square. We overparked Museum Square based on our own ordinances and we overparked Museum Square based on what traffic and parking experts tell us. I see a gentleman shaking his head, that's no. We're not overparked in his opinion, but in the opinion of experts, we are overparked. So if we wind up losing a few spaces on the street to create an exciting amenity that attracts more people, then I'm certainly willing to try to find how we, how we strike that balance. So it may only be one road, but I think it's a start and I think it'd be a wonderful amenity in our community. So thank you.
Vice Mayor Kapooti and then Councilmember Durham and Whitehead.
I love it, I'm totally excited, I think it's fantastic. I'm depressed as well with the dour comments here, I think the whole point of this council, again, we want the downtown to be thriving, to be exciting, to be year-round, to be not just seasonal. And, and these are the ways that we do it, bringing people down, giving them opportunities to have more walkability, more biking, more people shopping in our stores, more activity, more connectivity. We've made all these great investments with Museum Square along this whole corridor, I love the way you've got it divided into residential, retail, civic. I mean, what better way to activate this area, which a gray does not have enough activity, than to make it beautiful and shaded and green and walkable and give people a reason to be there, not to just come downtown, park in front of the one store, buy your, whatever you need and leave, but to actually come, live, work, play, walk, bike. This is the exact idea that, that's my vision for downtown and, and I, I think this is long overdue and incredibly exciting. This comment we have all the time about, we want more open space downtown, here you go. This is a fantastic open space. As I said before about the Rose Garden area, I'm not sure that makes a whole lot of sense to be open. To me, having just a giant open parking lot, which as the picture showed, really doesn't have a lot of cars in it most of the day, I mean, that's inviting folks to camp and, and bringing in, you know, some of the other problems we have in our downtown where, where we don't have enough vibrancy, where it becomes a bit of a homeless shelter and then we have a whole lot of other problems. So I think this is a perfect opportunity to bring in more open space, make it more walkable, make it more exciting. And the comment about it's not Scottsdale, wow, Scottsdale is a warm, sunny, beautiful climate, we want to be a destination. When I think of Scottsdale, that's exactly what I think of, an opportunity to be outside all the time, every day, enjoying the weather, you know, that's what people want to come to a city for, if there's a great, exciting vibe and things to do, not just park, go in the one store, leave, drive back to your hotel. I love this. And the only comment, the only thing I would like to point out is, in the civic core, when you park right now in the garage and you walk across, which we do for a lot of events and things to Smoka, and you're kind of walking by the dumpsters and, right, you're like, where's the front door? I would definitely like that area to be more activated. I mean, we have this amazing asset in that museum and it's so not user-friendly. That should definitely be more beautiful and, and more engaging, for sure, in my opinion. That would be my one comment about something that needs to be upgraded there.
Got it.
And I think that about covers it. Thank you.
Councilmember Durham, Councilwoman Whitehead.
Regarding Councilmember Littlefield's comment that there was a lot of white here and white buildings, I assume that's just blank canvas?
It's blank, it's to, where we are in the process, it's just saying that structure could live there.
Right.
And I agree that there's room to continue, you know, down the road to further define elements to the character of.
So those structures are not going to be white, they're going to be tan and green and... and all of the other colors?
They have potential to, through, because I think somebody had mentioned it earlier, with a public project like this, you know, there's community outreach involved. There's going to be layers of all that information that start to drive the narrative and more of the story. This initial concept and initial visioning was to reimagine a street and readjust priorities, and then see what comes of it, and then take that as a basis to kind of, you know, build something. So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I think overall, I think it's a very good idea to enliven that part of town. Parking seems to be the main question about this, and I've said this before, and it probably needs to be, we need to be constantly reminded of it. Some of the studies I've read about parking regarding Scottsdale said that there are three aspects of parking. You can have free parking, you can have convenient parking, or you can have plentiful parking. You can pick two of those, but you can't get all three. And we've chosen free parking here for, and that's the way we've gone. And if we've chosen free parking, that means we can't have parking that is both plentiful and convenient. And I think that we have plentiful parking, or at least enough parking, but it's not always convenient. And I think we need to do more about making our better signage of our parking, I've made this point before, better directions, and trying to direct people to the parking. Whenever you want to go to this part of town, I always park in the Museum of the West parking lot. You're guaranteed a spot there. You're not going to be very far from where you want to go. And I think we just need to have better publicity about this. Now, I can't see a point that there is going to be, this would remove some parking from what's been agreed to in the Museum of the West and the Museum Square area. And I think in that area, that I would work on trying to sort of compromise the width of the area, to try to restore some of that parking while protecting the pedestrian areas and the biking areas. I think the biking and the pedestrian might be able to be a little narrower, a little bit skinnier. So I think I would, in that part of the town, I'd be interested in narrowing this up a little bit, and restoring some of the parking while trying to keep the pedestrian and the bicycle flexibility.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Councilwoman Janik, and then Councilwoman Whitehead.
Well, thank you very much. This is a very dynamic, exciting plan. It is a bit overwhelming, because it is a very big plan, it's the overview, and certainly I think we need to round out some of the corners. But basically, I think this is a very good blueprint for us to work off of, to begin to accomplish some of these goals. I know parking is an issue, we all know parking is an issue. One of my big problems is, number one, signage, which is what Tom said. We had beautiful signs that blended with the environment. When I'm driving around, I want to see the sign. I don't want it to blend. My other big problem is, we have a lot of spots, but they're little, they're small parking lots. So I'm going to drive around to five small parking lots to find parking. I think we need a little bit more strategic areas that would have more parking spots, and perhaps we could eliminate some of these small areas and develop them into parks or more retail or whatever. But I really think we can do a better job to accommodate this, as well as to accommodate the cars, by looking at the whole idea of what we're doing with the cars. But again, I think this is a very exciting, dynamic plan. Thank you.
Councilwoman Whitehead.
Thank you, Mayor. So first of all, for the notes, because I know that our, that Ben Lane is taking notes, I want to be very, very clear. I did not hear the mayor or me suggest that a single tree be removed from the plan. So we are, I mean, and the mayor can correct me if I'm wrong, but yeah, the trees, my comments are, the trees stay. In an urban environment, in any environment, you want to be incredibly judicious with how you use space. So what we have are bike, I am a bicyclist, I rode my bike tonight, as I always do to city council meetings, and I'll be riding home. But we have bike lanes that are wider than the greenbelt on a street that is slow-moving, and we don't have that many bikes. I'm all, so I don't think, I think the plans are beautiful, but it's not a judicious use of space, because so much land is dedicated to a bike lane. And I want to talk about that as open space. Can you have a picnic in a bike lane when there's no bikes? No, you really can't. So what you have is a space that won't be used sufficiently, and it won't provide other benefits. So, and we're going to lose parking on the street. So what I'm saying is, there are a lot of stakeholders pulling and tugging, and I think if we focus on the use of space in a manner that's judicious, we get the parking, we get the safe bike rides, we certainly get the trees, I absolutely want all the trees, and maybe we can expand those trees around the corners, as some of the other speakers said. I also want to comment on Councilwoman Kapooti's comment on the Civic Center. That is, I agree, I had not thought of that, but it's really a not pleasant part, so something to make that better for cyclists, it's a real problem, just for pedestrians, so they feel safe. So that is a weak area. And then again, those bike, those separated bike lanes, wherever the cars are moving fast, will save lives, and will get more people out on bikes, but you don't need it right there in that little urban spot. Thanks.
Perfect. Okay, hopefully I can wrap up just some comments. We're at an important time, because large projects such as Museum Square are moving forward. They did close and purchased the land from the city, so that's a positive. So then, you know, what do we do as a community moving forward as well? So we've got a public track and a private track. Looking for some completion, something that will fit together. It's important to look at those, I would call them like plaza nodes. For instance, if you had a highway that was just 100, 200 feet wide, and it was two miles short, you'd say, why does it have to be that way, right? It should be wider where there's, or narrower where there's a plaza maybe, and wider where, so think about that, not just undulating it that way, but how it would work. We do have a goal, that we want this area to be very presentable, very walkable, and certainly it will be advantageous for the city's assets, the Museum of the West and the Civic Center, so that's a positive. Right now, and you've probably considered the Uber-Lift drop-off area, these are generally, they're the cause of a lot of congestion, because they're making a decision while they're driving, or they just drop somebody off. I see them all the time, almost double-parked in an intersection. I mean, they're just like, should I go left or right, depending on where my next call is? So maybe there's a way to get this area to work for drop-offs that we can handle at every block or every other block to make sense. It really does make sense at the Center for the Arts. Now, and then just look at the additional connectivity to the couplet. Again, right now, I've got a nice walkable area that kind of leads to nowhere. After you hit Goldwater, I don't know what you're going to on the other side of Goldwater, right? So that's, now, on the other side, there's a lot of action, so, because it goes to Indian Bend. So I would concentrate on making those turns and encouraging, you know, interaction to our older areas to make it work. I see no other hands with that. I think we're, we've given some good comments, and what, my other question is, when would you be coming back, just as information? Could you give us some guidance, Jim, on that?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we can go back and rework, based on all the comments we heard. I think one of the comments I heard this evening, as well, is depict the parking that exists down there. We also had mention of a couple of projects, what's required of those projects, and then our net gain in other parking areas where we're adding additional parking. I would like to point out, the Artisan came up this evening, we have not seen that project yet before you, and that is a private parking lot that we're looking to potentially look at public parking on. And so those we could bring back and have that further discussion. Also, there was some really good input regarding the front of the, which we didn't show a picture of, but I think we'll show some pictures next time of some of that outside. So to direct answer to the question, probably be about a month, maybe a little over a month, so we could work through some of this and identify all of those specifics associated with it. We also have, we can come back with some of the financial numbers, depending on what we do, but we really needed good input today. And so we'll go back and rework some of this and bring it back. So probably about a month and a half out.
Thank you. I see Councilmember Millhaven.
Thank you. I just had a question in terms of next steps. I heard you talk about public outreach and maybe some design charrettes and things to help flesh out the design with the input of business owners or property owners, and was wondering where that fits into that process, because I'm sure that won't be done in the next month.
Yeah, before we would finalize anything, because we're still early in the process, we're not even, you know, well-long, but I think we got some pretty good input from council, so if council would like, we could skip coming back to you for a longer period of time, and then go out and start to get all the public input and the charrettes and everything else. Knowing what you've asked for, there's been some questions regarding parking, where they identifying parking, and so if you don't wish to hear that in the near future, and us to go out and do the charrettes, we're happy to do that as well. I just wanted to try to fulfill the direct comments this evening and give you that. I could send that by memo to all of you, and send you the maps, and then continue in our process of doing the public outreach if you desire.
That would be my preference, to get some public input before we move, go too much further. Thank you.
We'll look for direction from the city manager. I did want to clarify something, because it came back, the question of a deck park there at Goldwater and Fifth. See, I believe if we could extend a deck, the open space occurs on that deck. So it's not just a shaded element to shade the cars, it's you're actually adding a net width to that area. It might be a terrace element, it could be a few steps up or a ramp or something, but it creates a great opportunity for a sculpture garden and a raised element. So that was a thing I thought I'd mention. Okay, at this point, we are concluded with the subjects of our work session. Thank you so much, everyone. And for all the input, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. We have motion, we have motion, and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Record your vote.